So are we on record?
On record.
It's 5:07 and I call to order the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting of May 22, 2017. Roll call, please.
Susan Walkie?
Present.
Here.
Kip Ward?
Here.
Don Williams?
Here.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Riley Hoglund, excused. Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens present. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the agency's attention any item not listed on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others. As a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor can discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The chair has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. And I think we had a sign-up sheet. Can someone bring it forward?
I don't have the sign-up sheet yet, but there are a couple of people in the audience that would like to speak.
Okay. Donna Morris, would you like to come forward? Please state your name for the record, no need for an address.
My name is Donna Morris, resident of Lincoln City. I was sent down here by Joe Call to -- I went just -- and she said to be sure to tell you thank you for allowing us to make -- to have the workforce, the workforce housing plan on your agenda to be discussed. And obviously, it's a great need for the city and for the workers. And then I know that you're concerned about costs, so if, you know, if you have a chance to look at what I just passed out, Joe Call put together 12 pages worth of possible grants and funding that you could, you know, apply for, to pay for some of it. And it would be as, you know, matching funds. So like I say, please, you know, really consider this. It's a really big need in the city and, you know, that's, you know, that's basically it is like -- and I know that you all know that that is and that you'll do what you can. So, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else wish -- please come forward. Hi. Please state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Lynn Rodström and I'm the president of Lincoln City Homeless Solutions. We provide information, referral, and resource counseling for 15 agencies operated 24/7 hotline for homeless and low-income people. We are in desperate need of a place to have services, both as a shelter and an office where we can meet with people to forward them in their lives and provide for their basic needs. We have approximately 17 agencies here in Lincoln City, most of whom are run by volunteers. All these agencies provide low-cost services, no cost to the city, for things like laundry services, household goods, food, laundry, everything we can do to meet people's basic needs. As a group of people, we've been very involved in trying to get a shelter. There is a critical need for a shelter here, especially in the winter. And with the housing situation, the way it is, things are not getting better and we're going to have more and more people needing housing unless we're providing more housing as a city. So all I would like to do is to remind you of how important funding is for a shelter. I also do grant writing and most of our grants require at least a 30% match from a local entity prior to receiving large amounts of money. They want to make sure that we have the support from the local entities to receive these grants. So it's critical that the city help us provide some resources so that we can get out and get these grants. And that's all I have to say. And I really thank you. I know many of you have been involved in this effort and are supportive of what we're doing. And we can't, as a group of homeless providers, thank you enough for taking an interest in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak this evening? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is minutes and we have none. And the next item, special order of business presentations. Ms. Robertson, we have an item entitled "Bond Sale Project Prioritization." Are you going to help us with this discussion?
Good evening. I'm here with Mr. Chandler so that we can answer any questions you might have in making this challenging decision. As the staff report mentions, you've done some work so far in narrowing down a very hefty list of possible projects with the last remaining bond funds, just under $3 million. And your shortlist of potential projects is in the staff report. I'm happy to speak more about each one if that's helpful or try to answer any questions, provide more information, whatever you feel would be helpful in discussion and decision.
And are we going to be deciding on these tonight?
That's the goal.
And we had a little dot issue that we were going to do or a plan that seemed to have gone by the wayside. Do we know why that did?
I heard that idea, but I didn't get clear direction to implement that. I apologize. What I heard was that there wasn't enough time at the last meeting and that you would like to have this on the agenda, be the only thing on the agenda, so that you could have enough time to talk about all the projects. So if you would like to do that, we can.
I don't know what the will of the council would be, but at one point we all agreed, or most of us agreed, that it was a good idea, then it just never happened.
Well, we can still do that if that's what the agency would like to do.
It's a suggestion, but...
I thought we kind of said we could condense them because there was just a certain number. It was like it was a small manageable kind of number. Was there some kind of discussion like that? No?
I remember that discussion in context of the city priorities. I don't remember that discussion in the context of the URA shortlist of projects.
I'm afraid I missed a meeting, so I'm unclear.
That was the city.
So what we're looking at is that we have the D-Lake Utility Undergrounding, the Economic Development Toolbox, the Sanitary Sewer Line/Stormwater Improvements, the Teen/Youth Center, Homelessness Center, Workforce Housing, Child Care Facility, Internet Access, and Parks. That was the shortlist that you had and then there were projects that were associated with those. You have $2.975 million that will be this bond issue and about $400,000 that looks like will be the ending fund balance for this year that's remaining. And so we need you to be able to tell us the amount. If you recall, we had originally talked about proceeding with the bond and then you would be able to narrow it. The problem with that is that we would end up paying interest, the longer it drug out, that we would be paying interest on construction projects or projects we have not begun. And so to save the city the cost of the interest, the bond council recommended that you select your priorities before we go out issuing the bond.
Prior to any further discussion, I need to state that I met with a statutory conflict of interest and must declare a potential conflict of interest. My part-time salary is paid from a grant which was awarded to Bama from the Urban Renewal Economic Development Toolbox in 2014, prior to my election to city council. Today, we're discussing urban renewal priorities and one of our possible projects to fund is the Economic Development Toolbox, which encompasses a wide variety of programs. This puts me in a class of potential, potentially affected persons. All business owners in the urban renewal district are also potentially affected persons. I will participate in today's discussion regarding urban renewal priorities.
Do you need any information or reminders? For example, we had sanitary sewer line, stormwater improvements. Do you need a reminder of what that project actually is or do you have enough information to proceed?
Agency members have to say? I've got plenty of information.
Also, the issue is we have a counselor who is available by phone to vote if it's acceptable.
Well, I think that the biggest ticket item financially on this list is the undergrounding. And if we could get a consensus on how we feel about the undergrounding, that might give us a direction to go after that. How do other agency members feel about that?
I agree, and I'm in favor of undergrounding.
I am in favor of putting money towards that undergrounding also, get that project that has been started, completed.
Madam Chair, I still stand in opposition to it. I don't think it's a wise use of taxpayer dollars.
I'm in favor of it.
And...
The study's already been done, so this is just to do the work, right? The study has already been done, so this is just, all the preliminary work's been done on this, so this is just to move forward, isn't that correct?
This would be the actual project.
Right. I'm for it.
I'm in favor of a modified version of it. I think that it should begin at the beginning of the D River Way, D River Wayside Park and end at the end of the D River Wayside Park, not run it back up to, is it Sixth Street or up to Sixth Street?
Ms. Robertson, can you give us some clarification on the reasons for the boundaries?
Sure. We originally looked at doing one side of the street and we looked at basically, as you mentioned, Sixth Street down to, I believe it's Third, Second, I think it's Second Drive, which is just basically the next street on the west side of the highway after the bridge, to the north of the bridge. And we also looked at extending it through, there's a section that is actually challenging in terms of sidewalk with the telephone poles. We looked at extending it through that section as well and it really became a cost driver. And the decision for the current footprint for the project was decided based on where the view shed is. We did some photographs as we were kind of what we call windshield survey, as where one person's driving and one person is taking pictures as you drive along the highway so that you can see where is the ocean visible as you're driving or walking along the highway. And then that really became the deciding factor about where the view shed begins and ends, and that is where the wires needed to go underground. Now, when you put wires underground, it usually ends up being a little more complicated in terms of the engineering and the design, because when you drop the wire, it has to go into a vault box and you have to make sure the vault box, let's say, isn't in a driveway or isn't in a public sidewalk or, you know, that that large vault box is properly located. So after you decide where you want the wires gone from, then you have to kind of look at the footprint of development and see where practically speaking is it going to be most efficient for cost and for physicality for that project to begin or end. And so those are the reasons why it is where it is now in the design. And then also, the other thing is there was a decision to put both sides of the highway underground. And I think the reason for that was it was not significantly more expensive. And the reason it wasn't significantly more expensive is because when you move all those wires, that would be basically like a relocation. So when you put the power poles down and you put the lines underground, there would still be a need for some connections on the east side of the highway. And in order to maintain those, the requirements for overhead power lines or telecommunications lines are very, very large poles. And the cost of those poles, they're really giant metal poles that don't need to be guywired to accommodate wind forces. And so those poles are so expensive that I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, I want to say like $30,000 to $60,000 more in comparison to millions in order to do both sides of the highway rather than just the west side. So what we did, we got a little ways into the design and then the question was, well, why are we going to leave them on one side if we're paying this much money to underground them? And what would be the cost difference? And so the agency at that time, in the middle of the design, said, "Let's do a modification and complete the design for both sides of Highway 101."
So what would be the cost difference between going on both sides and clear to Sixth Street, which puts you in front of the D Sands, and back to Second Street, which takes you 200 feet north of Kylos roughly? So what's, doing just in front of the D River Wayside versus doing both sides and expanding it out to Sixth and Second, what's the cost difference?
I don't know what that would be. I'd have to contract with our engineers to ask them to redo a cost estimate. But I can tell you that I think it's a quarter of the cost is just to go under the river. So that is kind of a challenging, you know, it's a small river, but they still have to do the bore underneath. So that's part of it. I'm trying to think of what else. You know, the reason why it ends at Second Street is because there was room for the vault box there. That was the earliest opportunity that we could find a place to finish the project. Why it goes in front of the D Sands is because as you're coming north on Highway 101, there is a view shed there because the D Sands is set back from the highway and they have driveways and parking and there's public right-of-way, so we did not want to interrupt that with the vault boxes. So we really tried to capture that view shed specifically. So I don't have an answer, but if you all would like an answer, I can work on one.
Well, I don't want to hamstring the process. I'm just, I'm concerned that, you know, this is our biggest project. I'm a big undergrander fan. So this is a big project. I'm afraid that the cost, because things tend to escalate, particularly when you go under a river. I'm just concerned that that might be, that might be the only thing that we get.
Yeah, the cost estimate, we had, Public Works was kind enough to spend some time to look at our cost estimate and based on their experience with some recent projects, talk about how they see it would be higher based on our design. And they did accommodate that. Let's see if I can find that here. Yeah, so in your mega list that was given to you a few months ago, the cost estimate for construction is about $2 million. Construction management would be $50,000. The D River easements would be $140,000 and does not include any redesign of the plans which were completed in March of 2015. And so far, those design costs that we have spent so far, about $144,000. And so total cost estimate is $2.2 million. And that's based on the current design with a little added information from recent projects. So that is the most up-to-date information that we have.
And we have $3.4 million?
Uh-huh.
I have, we have $3.4?
There's about $400,000 left over. There are some, as you might remember, the Public Works Department bid the north 50th Street pump station upgrade, which we had allocated, I think about $1 million for, and that came in under budget. So there is some leftover from that. And then with the new bond funds, it's about $3.4 total. And if you might remember in your staff report, if we find, I think at the last meeting there was a question about if we want to do one project, how flexible is the money and can we use it? Can we move it to a different project? And the bond council said that for the type of bond that you all have been talking about getting, which is a taxable bond that's backed by urban renewal, not backed by the city, then that is really the most flexible of types of bonds. So if you, you know, decide on one or two or however many projects for some amount of money and then you need additional funds, then you can use those funds however you decide. The question, or the question, the catch is what Mr. Chandler mentioned about, if you have the funds sitting in an account, then you're paying interest on them and not moving the projects forward. So that would be the only kind of timing that we need to make sure we're getting as close as possible on decisions for implementing the projects.
Allison, do you know how much, from your experience, how much does it cost to bury each telephone pole or power pole?
That's a great question. I don't know.
We buried lots of them.
Yeah, and it's been a couple of years since I've looked very closely at those plans that we had finished. I don't know. I just remember looking at a quarter of the cost would be to go under the river. But per pole, I don't know. I mean, each environment's different, depends on how many poles you want to bury. So I just, I don't have an answer. I could ask and see. I don't know if there's a magic number or a range.
I would be interested to hear that.
Okay. If I may add one more thing, this may or may not be helpful to you. I did talk with Pacific Power about, do they like undergrounding? Do they not like undergrounding? And they did say that they don't have a preference. I'm sure you can imagine, there are pros and cons. But basically, what it comes down to is every area is unique. And they do say there's pros and cons. The aesthetics are certainly more appealing with undergrounding and is a key driver for most requests for undergrounding. There is some protection from weather-related elements, but this could be outweighed by the difficulty we face when we have an underground issue. The primary reason customers opt to stay overhead is due to the high cost of placing facilities underground in the first place. Also, as I mentioned, it's more difficult for us to locate issues underground, which can increase outage restoration time. So it's kind of this, you know, it's better, less outages possibly by being underground, but harder to find them possibly, and everything's possibly, and there's no real certainty in what they have. They did look at, so we do have Taft and Ocean Lake, which are already undergrounded as opposed to Rhodes End, for example. And Taft had 17 outages. This was in a two-year period of time. Taft had 17 outages and Ocean Lake had 38. However, the outages in Ocean Lake were only 5.8 minutes. And in Taft, even though they had fewer outages, the outages were 693 minutes. So I asked more about that and they just don't have information about if the outages were planned or not planned. But it's just, it's not really an apples-to-apples sort of a thing, you know, could be the water table in Taft versus Ocean Lake. I mean, there are all kinds of explanations and you can't generalize that one area means the other area's going to be the same. So I hesitated to bring that up, but basically, Pacific Power doesn't take a stance and it's really, of course, driven by cost and aesthetics. Those are the main reasons why it's done.
Have we ever, ever underground under a river?
Urban renewal has not. The city has undergrounded, but they didn't do it for aesthetics. They did it for basic services like water and sewer and, you know, the basic public works.
But they weren't electrical lines?
Mm-mm, not that I'm aware of.
And I understand that they would drill down to 30 feet below? I think that's what Lila mentioned.
I think so.
So Counselor Casper?
Yes.
Do you have an opinion on what we put on the table, the undergrounding, and looking to at least see if that's on or off the table?
I don't think I'd be in favor of it.
And how are we going to deal with...
Can we contact Ms. Hoglund?
Yeah.
We, that's why I went to talk to Bill. We're not set up for a telephonic participation and we actually gave Bill no advance notice of that. So Riley had actually emailed Kathy and that's what we were over here referring about.
His phone would still work, wouldn't it?
Well, but it's one thing to call him on the phone and say, "How do you vote on this?" It's another thing to telephonically attend a public meeting. So you don't just call him and say, "How do you vote?" He would actually listen in on the meeting and we would, public needs to be aware that he's on the line, so.
Ms. Counselor Ward, I don't know what his position was. So we don't know.
I mean, I like undergrounding for certain. I just don't want all of the funds taken by one project. That's what I'm frightened by, because a lot of people have a lot of wants. And I've seen undergrounding kind of spin out of control as far as going under a river. And the prices go out of, the costs go out of control as well.
How many years ago was it?
Two.
Two?
Yeah. You know what I'm talking about, yeah.
Were you talking about pipes?
Were we?
Or were you talking about pass sewer water project?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to know. But we have found a contractor who's done it well.
Yeah. I mean, I can get a passionate plea for me. It's the biggest one and, you know, we...
Madam Chair, I think I have passionately in the past talked about why I think it's a good idea to do it for the city for the long term, for visitors as well as those of us who drive around the corner and there's the beautiful ocean. And it is the first view of the ocean for people who are coming to the city. And I think, long-term, it's going to make a lot of difference. Right now, with all of, with all of the wires, it just looks cluttered and, you know, it just doesn't have the presentation, let's say, for the city that we could have if we cleaned up that look. So I'm 100% for it. So I'm a hundred percent for it.
That makes three of us. Troubledness.
I'm not, I'm not wobbly at all. I'm just a little negotiation here. I mean, if we can, I, I hate wires. I wish we could get them out of the whole city. And I wish, going back over the urban renewal time, I know we had a lot of undergrounding and stuff to do, but I would have liked to have done more of it. Again, the only thing that's, that's stopping me from being a hundred percent is that looking at the list that everyone put there, everyone had their little, I don't mean to minimize them, but everyone had their projects. And I would just hate to have one project done and five or six people not get to do their project. And I don't really have a project. Mine's blight, and I'm going to address that wherever it goes.
And, and I feel that, that blight is what we should be addressing, and some of these issues aren't necessarily blight, in my opinion, and that we could find other, the City Council could find city money to cover some of these other projects.
Well, also, I'm sorry.
I don't think that the projects should be ignored.
Right. I, we've got a lot of property that's going up for sale. And, and if, as, as we get them more liquid, that should be a significant pool of money if we get aggressive as far as getting them out there. And, and then we can use for, I mean, if we put, if we sell that property and, and put enough in a pool, we can actually afford to go out and buy a piece of blighted property, unblight it, and then put it on the market and do the same over and over again. But we can't do that if we don't have any capital in our bucket. So that's another way to address it, to be able to have both if you want. But we, you know, I think we need to be kind of single-minded and it's, and, and get these properties sold so we can do things that are, that are going to look a lot nicer for our, our community.
To clarify things, we have three point four million in the urban renewal budget, but the Urban Renewal Agency also owns real property, correct?
Yes.
So if we were to sell at least part of that, we would have additional funds.
Yes, and so far, what we're doing is developing those four properties until we really advertise them and know what development partnerships are going to be necessary and available in order to implement those development projects. We don't know if we will make a profit on that. If you prefer to just sell it straight out and not actually partner in order to get the development to happen, it, it's hard for me to, again, I would love to have a crystal ball, but I just can't guarantee that it won't even cost money to develop. It just depends on how many development conditions we will be placing on the property in order to accomplish those objectives.
So those partnerships would, would decrease the sale proceeds, okay?
It just depends on what we will require of the developer.
Okay.
If we say, "We want this many square feet. We want it to look like this. We want it to have this use that may or may not be feasible for the market, but we are, we as a city and a community are wanting to have this use." There are, the more conditions we put on the property, the less profitable, profitable it can become. If we say, "Here's the property. Tell us what you want to build," and then we will say if we want that or not, there's a risk with that, because if, if we're in a position of just hearing what the developers want for years to come and we don't find anything satisfactory, then developers won't be interested in trying to partner with us anymore, because they'll say we're not serious. So somewhere in between is the sweet spot of what's the minimum that the agency is wanting to see from the property development, and what is the market's response to doing that project? And until we know both of those things, we won't know what the development and disposition agreement is with the developer, which is a negotiated closed-door process, until we arrive at something that's agreeable in order to implement the project. So it's, it's just hard to predict. They're all four very different properties. They're in different parts of town, you know, small to larger, but they're still all relatively small. So until we get further down the road, we, it's going to be hard to know. You know, we've done a lot of work at those properties to bring the sidewalks up, you know, and, and redo the, the street and all kinds of things that would make the properties more attractive to developers. So I think we've done a lot of work in that respect, but until we get there, we won't know how that will unfold.
So, if I may, just to move us along, I'm looking at the clock and getting a little worried. I have, I have an idea. Some of these, just as you have said, Madam Chair, look like they could be funded elsewhere. So I'm going to take the first stab at maybe we can, can keep the projects but move them to a different budget out of urban renewal. And you'll, and you can be the backstop saying, "No, we can't do that." Okay?
He may be the backstop.
All right. Well, one of you help me out here. Okay, so the third bullet, sanitary sewer line and stormwater improvements, I say move that to the city budget. And the teen and the youth center, I say move that to the city under parks and, and that needs some study to find out exactly what we're looking at there. And the next budget, which is the homeless center, move that to the city budget, because we already have some budget, a budget line item for that. And then I need some more help with the next one, so then skip that and we'll come back to it. And the childcare facility, I have an idea. I don't know if it's a good one, but potentially, that could be in the same facility as the teen center, and perhaps we can do some, there's some training available to train students how to do childcare, and it might be, it might be a good way to get some work experience for them. But anyway, that's one idea. And then the last one, skip internet for a minute, and then the last one, parks, I'd say move that to the city budget as well, because we, now that we have a plan, I think it fits under there. Now, if we go back up to workforce housing, urban renewal plan number nineteen, I've forgotten exactly what that is.
This is in our urban renewal plan as a possible project, and it basically allows the agency to use money to partner on workforce housing developments. That, that's a project that we've had in our plan since, I believe, two thousand nine. It's under economic development, and we just have not had any interest. You know, most of the urban renewal district is commercial and not residential. There are some residential areas, like in Cutler City, that's mostly residential except for on the highway. But most of the urban renewal district is commercial. So we haven't had, Planning Department is great in letting me know when there's a site plan review meeting, and if the property is located in the urban renewal district, I do attend. And we just haven't had workforce housing as a development coming forward. There have been some inquiries, but as far as having them in the urban renewal district and workforce, specifically addressing workforce housing, since two thousand nine, I haven't heard any.
So then should we move that, because we already have workforce housing under the city budget?
It's essentially, it's essentially a financial incentive that would be used for developers to, to include or to develop workforce housing within a project.
And we don't quite have that under the city budget, but is that something we could consider?
Sure.
I mean, I'm just trying to.
Sure.
Get our list sorted here.
Yeah, also in the economic development toolbox, as we've talked about in the past, you know, there are some tools that are out and available for use. And then there are a number of tools that are ideas that could be considered as moving those out, and some of those would help with development in general and could be tailored specifically for workforce housing. I just don't know how many properties that really is, because we haven't actually looked at the urban renewal district in terms of housing before.
Okay.
It might be one property. It might be ten properties. It might be no properties.
So that bullet, you'd be comfortable with moving to the city, and then we still have it under the toolbox if we need it?
It's up, it's up to you all. I mean, I'm just trying to shorten our list.
The funds could come from a different source, yes.
And whether it ends up under the Economic Development Department or whatever in the future, we can talk about that. Okay. And then back up to the internet access. I know that member Casper has her hands all over this one, so I'm going to tread carefully. I would suggest that this bullet, do all of the background work to find the costs associated with this type of project, identify the users, and research potential partners, et cetera. Kind of go on a fishing mission to put all these things together and then, because how do we know how much that is?
My concern with this issue is that we're talking about community fiber, and urban renewal agency can only deal with things in the urban renewal district. So I think if we really want citywide internet access, it needs to be a city budget issue, not an urban renewal district.
Good point. I hadn't thought of that.
And the childcare facility is a possibility in the economic development toolbox. So that is covered by the economic development toolbox.
Okay, so we aren't losing it. We're just, you know.
It's already there in the.
Okay. So, so far, we haven't lost anything on this list. We've just moved them under other budgets or?
So you're saying these projects will still get done, but not with urban renewal funds?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any of them go away.
And, and the homelessness is not even called out in the urban renewal plan, so technically a homeless center would not be.
Not part of the district.
Would not, well, if it's not in our plan, then we can't use those funds that way, correct?
Well, if the agency decided it was a goal or objective to, it, right here, it says that it's not called out in the plan, but it could, urban renewal could potentially involve, be involved with property acquisition, infrastructure, and/or property re or development. But the, well, I shouldn't say but, because I don't mean to minimize the issue, because it is a, a big issue that the City Council's addressing. Typically, though, with urban renewal, the, the overall goal and the reason why a district is created is to try to maximize what they call highest and best use for property, which means, you know, mostly getting the property back on the tax rolls in a way that creates more revenue for all of the taxing districts. That's kind of what the highest and best use means. There are other uses that are, you know, community interests and city objectives that are folded into that, because we try and, we try and get everything accomplished as much as we can. But you're right, homelessness was not specifically called out, and neither was housing until two thousand nine. So these are, these are just important current topics that are on, on the table. If, if a homelessness center was created by urban renewal's purchasing property and there was someone to run it, I, I imagine, I don't know for sure, but I imagine it would probably be a nonprofit, and it may be exempt from paying taxes. And so that's up to you as a policy decision-making body to decide if that is of value for this particular budget.
So my list then only now includes the D-like utility undergrounding, the economic development toolbox, because we haven't lost anything again. I want to say that loud and clear. But we've been able to put our arms around more of what that budget could do here.
We are about to the end of our time limit. I entertain a motion if anyone has one.
So Madam Chair, I guess, you know, throw the ball down to the end of the dios, and you know, the guy who's sitting on the fence, you know, who was very eloquently indicated that he wanted to make sure everybody had their shot at their projects. I think we eliminated it down, not eliminated, but put the list down to two, two items.
So where are we, Counselor, where are we now as far as what everyone wanted? I don't have their list in front of me, but everyone has their, their wants, and I'm not sure I know what each one of them want.
Well, now, you're very frustrating.
Good. I have like three wives that would agree with you.
There's been a process of staff very eloquently indicated, one, two, three, four, five, we're into our at least sixth meeting on this same topic.
And whereon, I proposed a system, the DOT system, so we would know how everyone stood.
And I, I appreciate that. We just kind of very diplomatically went through the DOT system for you, listing the shortlist of projects. And very eloquently, Counselor Hinton put forth, "There is money in other budgets to take care of these things, except for two items that are on this list."
Well, so, so generally, when we're trying to find a place for things, you can dump them into the, you can, you can put them into the general fund, right? But you still will need to take something out. We just can't, it's not Santa's bag. We can't just keep saying, "Well, general fund will pay for this or that."
Well, once again, to do the math, three point four million is in the pot.
Right.
Two point two is undergrounding, approximately.
Okay, it's three point four and two point two.
So subtract two point two from three point four, you have one point two million.
One point two. And generally, we do have a, a ten percent padding on that.
Throw half a million in there, just for the fun of it.
Okay.
And you still have, could you do the quick math, the, the one, one point two less a half a million is seven hundred thousand dollars. It could go into the toolkit, the economic toolkit, just satisfying all three things, the two projects and your desire to have an overabundance of money in, in the projects.
Right.
Plus, plus, as you said.
As we have witnessed here, though, seven hundred thousand dollars goes away very quickly.
Is more money, no, forget, we have a half a million you already put as a reserve in your undergrounding, and seven hundred thousand left over for the toolkit. And as staff has indicated, there are properties that could be sold, you know, again, up to the agency, of which would be additional. So trying to demonstrate for you the overabundance of security on your.
There's never an overabundance of money.
But then that's going to be the problem, that, you know.
So, did you wish to? Go ahead, round two. Go ahead, go ahead.
Again, to expedite this, is there any support for my idea amongst the members of what you were just speaking of? Of moving these, moving these over into other budgets, not losing them, but to fund the undergrounding and fund the toolkit, toolbox?
I'd second that motion. Those, those two, I think the motion would be to pick those two items as your primary projects. And the only projects.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion that are. Yes, I'd like to make that motion, that our potential project list, if this satisfies the, the bond, that's the next question. But anyway, the D-like utility undergrounding and the economic development toolbox. Do I hear?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second discussion?
I thought we were discussing this. Well, I, I would be, I would offer this compromise. I would be willing to go for that, vote for that, if we shrink it up a little bit.
Can we have a vote? Help you vote?
Yeah, I mean.
Same argument he made before.
Yeah.
Well, doesn't, just 'cause it, I, I should keep, just 'cause I'm holding it, doesn't make it bad.
Let's have a vote.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yeah, maybe. All right, I, I, just don't complain when we run out of money for the rest of this stuff, yes?
Yes. Williams?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Or Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Neil May? I can't see. We have no public hearings, we have no resolutions. Agency member comments? You have two minutes. Anyone have anything to say? I just have one follow-up question, if I may. Are we okay with this? Does this work for the, for the bonding now? Can you move forward?
I think it will, I will let you know if not.
The next, the next thing we'll do is to lay out the steps and bring them back to you, so that you know what the following steps are from beginning to end.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ward?
One real quick thing. This, this list here of grants, is this something you, as our economic czar, is that something that your office is gonna be doing?
It, it depends on what the grants are for.
Okay, this is, yeah, for affordable housing stuff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm welcome, I, I mean, I'm happy to take a look at it. It depends on, you know, the, the economic development stuff on the city side is relatively uncharted. There's some ideas, and there's maybe some funding. So yes, I mean, we'd be happy to look at it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be looking to you for more direction on that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great. And no further comment, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, mics are off for a minute.
We got it done by six.